... and form of contract for bid number seventeen dash zero zero three Kern Middle School Fire Alarm Clock and Intercom Project. Let the record show that all board members except Jill Agress are currently present for this hearing. And on the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school calendar, the superintendent and district's administration are recommending approval of our eighteen nineteen school calendar. I ask Dr. Bruckner or her designate to quickly review the recommendation.
I would be very happy to review the calendar that we are proposing for two thousand eighteen nineteen. It is in many ways similar to the current calendar we have. It starts on a Thursday. Our staff has said over and over again that that's the best day to start back to school. We actually start on the very first day that the state of Iowa will allow us to in two thousand eighteen. That's August twenty-third. There's a two-week break at Christmas at the winter break. I apologize for that. There's a two-week winter break. That was preferred in our survey by eighty-four percent of the staff. There is no school on Wednesday before Thanksgiving, preferred by seventy-two percent of our staff. And there's no school on Thursday before Easter weekend. Preference for that option was about fifty percent. We voted on that twice, and it was clear that not everybody agreed on that, but at least half of the people did. Martin Luther King Junior Day will be a non-school day for students and staff. However, it will not be a trade year, trade day that year. The trade day, which means that it's a trade day for parent-teacher conferences, in that year will be February eighth. Snow days are separate. They're not tied with any holiday, and they are at the end of the second trimester as they are this year. The proposed calendar allows for one hundred and seventy-eight days of student contact and two trade days. We also calculate it by hours, and we report it by hours to the Department of Education, but for contract purposes, we count it by days. This calendar seems to have the support of our staff in an overwhelming majority.
Thank you. Do any board members have questions this time? Have we received any other feedback regarding the calendar through any means?
We have not. Generally speaking, people seem to be somewhat satisfied with the calendar. Every year, we have people say, "Let's have a calendar committee and get together and meet and talk about it." But as our votes come out, there are some things that absolutely everybody agrees on, and there are other things that are about fifty-fifty. This is a calendar that's worked for us. Past calendars have had snow makeup, snow makeup days at the end of the school year. That's really not a great practice for educators or children because it gives you the makeup days after all of your state tests, your advanced placement exams, your entrance exams are over with. So this allows us to have makeup days as close as possible to when the snow days occur.
Any other questions? The board will take action on this during the regular meeting, but is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments about the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school calendar? If so, please come up, state your name and address, and then feel free to talk. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next portion of this, the plan specifications and form of contract for the Kern Middle School Fire Alarm Clock and Intercom Project. Superintendent and District Administration are recommending approval of the plan specifications and form of contract for bid seventeen dash zero zero three for this project. I ask Dr. Bruckner again or designate to review recommendation.
And the board members received information, but I'll ask Stacy Pettit to kind of give a history of this recommendation. It's very similar to some work that was done this past summer at Wilson. So thank you very much. Oh, Stacy and team. Stacy and team.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight I have Shane Haas here from ETI. He's our architectural engineer who's working on this project with us. And basically, we want to bring to you bid seventeen zero zero three, which is similar to our Wilson project that we did this last summer, but it's going to be at Kern this year. We're going to look at replacing the entire fire alarm clock and intercom bell system at Kern Middle School. As a quick overview, again, it's, we've got some antiquated systems at the facility that are basically original to the building, and we're looking at, they're past their useful life, and we're just basically looking to replace them. We're hoping to do this project kind of in a phased system pending approval, of course. And we found out from the Wilson project that it was a little bit of a tight timeframe doing it just over the summer. So our hope is that we could start in March and actually start installing the systems at night and weekends and not remove the existing systems, but when we're ready to kind of turn everything over at that point. As a quick review for the project schedule, we would look at releasing the documents tomorrow if everything's approved. We would actually have a pre-bid meeting on the seventeenth of January. We would receive bids on the sixteenth of February and basically award the project at our board meeting on February twenty-eighth. If all goes well, we would look at beginning the project on March third and have substantial completion on August eleventh, right before school starts. Estimated costs of the project, it's basically around a hundred, or three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar project. As you can see from the breakdown, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty-three thousand for the fire alarm, a hundred and thirty-eight for the intercom system, fifty-one thousand for the clock system, and the rest of that is a ten percent contingency, you know, barring some issues that we might run into at the project. And like I said, I have Shane here. If you guys have any technical questions, I do have a couple of floor plans, but they might be hard to see because it's a big building. So, do you have any questions?
I have just one. I'm assuming what we do here will not affect any future remodeling we do of the school?
Correct, correct. It'll be very similar to Wilson. Everything we put in can be added to, moved around however we need to with any further construction projects.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Excellent. Thank you. And again, board members will be taking this matter under consideration during the regular meeting. But once again, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments about this plan specifications and form of contract for this bid? If so, please step forward. And not all at once. Excellent. Thank you very much for your attendance during this public hearing. And I will now close the public hearing session. Now we will call to order the regular meeting for the Council of Community Schools of January tenth, two thousand seventeen. Dean, please call the roll.
Mr. Grove, present. Mr. LaFurla?
Present.
Mr. Gazire?
Present.
Ms. Riley?
Present.
Mr. Hanson?
Present.
Mr. Arthur?
Present.
And now, if you'd please join me in a moment of silence, and we will follow up the pledge of allegiance. Where else do you get to say the pledge? All the time. And now Martha will do the "we are proud of our schools" introductions.
Tonight, I'm going to tell you, we are proud of a young man who volunteered to come to a board meeting tonight. Ian Bowman, who is an eighth-grade student at Kern, wanted to come to the last work session. I told him he was certainly welcome, but that it might be better to see a regular meeting. So he's here. The most wonderful gentleman I've talked to. He would love to take notes about our meeting, and then if a couple of the board members might be willing to talk to him afterwards, he's got a few questions about being a board member. But Ian, could you come up and let me just give you a little keepsake? If you want to keep all those reports in it, or all of your Boy Scout information, this is the thing that reminds you that you're a part of my company. We are going to honor two staff members tonight, but we might do it in two different times if you'll give me that permission. The first one is our support staff member of the month, and that's Christine, Kristy Donaldson, who's a par educator at Hoover Elementary. Kristy, come up here. She has her whole fan club there. So let me tell you about Kristy. Kristy Donaldson has been working with the Council of Schools for ten years. Here is what Kristy's nominators from our schools said about her. Kristy does an awesome job of establishing bonds with students. She finds their strengths and interests, and then makes learning relate to their lives and experiences. By building relationships and using her sense of humor, Kristy is able to motivate them to do their best work. Kristy transitions smoothly when coming into the classroom to work with students. She individualizes instruction. She reinforces the instructional language and actions that the teacher uses. She's willing to learn and seeks information from teachers to help make appropriate accommodations for students. Finally, Kristy is skillful at de-escalating behaviors by relating to students and being supportive. For all of these reasons, teachers and students alike at Hoover are very fortunate to have her as part of our team. Kristy's supported here tonight by Hoover principal Brittany Hetrick, her Sam, and many people from the Hoover Fan Club. So Kristy, on behalf of the Board of Education, the Community Education Foundation, and all of us, please accept this trophy that's heavier than it looks as our support staff member of the month for December. And this is a gift from the Community Ed Foundation and Three Sixty Six. If you enjoy this, then please congratulate them. Good job. Our other educator of the month is at parent-teacher conferences, and I told her that when she comes, we will, with permission of the board, introduce her to you.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, Kristy. Now we will have approval of our agenda. Is there a motion?
I move approval of our agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Excellent. Any changes or like, just like it is? Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Now we have approval of our minutes for the work session of December thirteenth and regular meeting of December thirteenth and work session of December twenty and special meeting of December twenty. Is there a motion?
We do them all in one motion, or?
Yes.
I'll move approval of the minutes for the work sessions and regular session and the special meeting in December.
Excellent. Second?
Second.
Any changes to these items? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and the motion is carried. There's now an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any matter that you would like to discuss. And if you are so inclined and still here, please step forward. Almost looked like somebody was stepping up, but no. All right, now we move on to superintendent's report and student achievement. It looks like Dr. Vorthman's going to highlight all the great things he's doing and we're doing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure tonight to give you the prologue to the post-secondary enrollment report. And I wanted to do so before I turn it over to Dr. Plore tonight, just to set a little context and give you some background on how we got to actually giving the board the post-secondary enrollment report. First time I brought you the post-secondary enrollment report was exactly two years ago today on a corresponding date. And the reason that's important is because it was about a month later that we launched Potawatomi Promise. So all of these things have kind of worked together in concert. They were also all spurred on by our strategic plan and Strategic Plan Five, which challenged us to make post-secondary enrollment inescapable for all students. And so we've not rested since I first brought you that report two years ago about not being satisfied with where our kids are at in post-secondary enrollment. And we have often associated it with the same level of passion that we did as reducing our dropout rate and increasing our graduation rate. We have the same amount of vigor behind making sure that we've created a post-secondary culture where kids have access to opportunities beyond high school. I tell you that because the state of Iowa has also caught up to the Council of School District and decided that they too are going to start releasing data related to post-secondary enrollment, which is, we applaud them for making sure that post-secondary enrollment is now as important as other academic and non-academic indicators that they also use for public reporting and accountability. Unfortunately, that information is still embargoed, but will be released to the public in the coming weeks. And in that data, you will soon find that there is a specific indicator called remediation. And that looks at the percentage of students who enroll in a post-secondary institution but do not qualify for regular coursework, but instead are enrolled in a non-credit-bearing pre-coursework. Oftentimes, that's in English and mathematics. I tell you that because about four years ago, Chris LaFurla and I sat in a conference room at ESC and tried to figure out what we were going to do between Council Bluffs and Iowa Western to stem the problem of remedial education. And one of the things that grew out of that was Potawatomi Promise and a greater relationship between Iowa Western and the Council of Community School District. So we've attacked this problem viciously since two thousand fourteen. We're still not satisfied with the amount of students that we have that are enrolling in remedial coursework. But I can tell you emphatically that when it comes to Council Bluff students who are enrolling in Iowa Western, we are making a difference. As I look back at the data, and I, actually, I pulled it today from a report that I dug out of my file from two thousand fourteen and looked at the bleak picture that was painted historically and in the classes that preceded two thousand fourteen. We had way too many kids who were ending up in remedial coursework at Iowa Western. So we did two things. One, we embarked on the Potawatomi Promise Initiative, which directly addressed the problem of remedial math by ensuring that all students who graduated from Council West Community Schools and were awarded a post-secondary scholarship to Iowa Western through the Iowa West Foundation, through Potawatomi Promise, were guaranteed not to end up in remedial math. They all took college statistics before they even set foot on the campus. We guaranteed those kids were not going into remedial math. Secondly, we revised the college placement model for a very simple reason. One is, a predictor of a predictor is not a very good predictor. And that is that the compass test, which is used by many colleges and universities across the nation to predict how well students will perform on the ACT, which predicts how well students will perform in freshman-level coursework, is not necessarily the best way to determine whether a child is ready for comp or college algebra. So we thought in Council Bluffs, it made much more sense to look at the whole child, to look at multiple measures of whether or not a student, we believed, would be successful in freshman-level coursework. And we look at them individually and holistically. And so now in Iowa Western and Council Bluffs, we have cut the number of students who enroll in remedial coursework down to almost zero. These people are responsible for that work, and it's my privilege to introduce them to you tonight. Dr. Jason Plore, Director of Secondary Ed, is going to share some enrollment data. He has guests with him tonight, Jordan Vall, our Potawatomi Promise coach, and our friends at Iowa Western, and I do mean friends, and respected colleagues from Iowa Western Community College, Bridget Watson and Megan Milburn.
Well, you can see, we have some good news to share. Dr. Vorthman shared the prologue, the data that we're going to present this evening. Real quick, though, on a personal note, I know we're talking about data, and we've got a special guest, Ian, here this evening. And Ian, you may or may not know this, but he's pursuing an Eagle Scout, and I know some of you are aware of that. But that's, that's only, when you look at the data, depending on the study, anywhere from two percent to four percent of young people are able to achieve that. He hasn't achieved it yet. But the fact that he's only thirteen makes him particularly unique in that data set. So what you're doing, Ian, and as a Kern student, we're very proud of you as a Boy Scout and as a Kern student. So obviously, a very unique, special young man, and I can speak to that because my two sons are Eagle Scouts, and so him and I were able to have a conversation beforehand. So welcome, Ian. One of the things that Corey alluded to, mentioned, is that there's a lot of good people doing a lot of hard work, trying to make our data better. And this type of data does not move easily. It's very, very challenging to move these types of data sets. One of the things every month, the principals and I and others, we do an administrative PLC because we're always looking for ways to make things better. And this book called Leading Change in Your School, and the subtitle is How to Conquer Myths, Build Commitment, and Get Results, is one of the things we're looking at. And we'll share some data, and the logical question is, is why is that data moving in the positive direction, and how are you doing it? But one of the things I mentioned the last couple presentations is that we're really investing in, as leaders, in others, particularly teachers, and teacher efficacy and teacher leadership. And Doug Reeves has a whole chapter on this, but he says, "Award-winning school districts have made teacher leadership a key part of their strategies for continued success. Another characteristic such school districts have is their insistence on continuous improvement and results." And we've been very, very focused in Council of Schools on persistence and continually getting better and getting results. And when we don't have the results, we look deeper. So with that, we want to share a little bit of information regarding our data. There's really three key points we want to cover this evening. We're excited that our post-secondary enrollments have reached a five-year high in Council Bluffs, and that's in spite of what's happened across the nation, where the data is either flat or, more often than not, it's going down. And we'll share some charts and graphs on that. Also, we're learning as a system. We're getting better internally. We know that. And Jordan's going to share a little bit about what he does as an example of one of the things we're doing. And finally, we're doing a better job with partnering with outside organizations. This evening, we're going to highlight Iowa Western, but there's other examples of that that you guys are aware of. So the first point is a celebration. When you look at all of our enrollments, which includes two-year and four-year as a part of the data set, again, we're at a five-year high, which is exciting. We've been up and down, and we've been generally flat, but we've had an uptick this past year, and we believe it's a result of hard work and some of the things that we're going to talk about. And then even more promising is the data around two-year enrollments. We're beating the national trend in that, and those numbers are even better. For example, this most recent data says thirty percent of our students are enrolled at the two-year college post-secondary option. That's over seven percent higher than the rest of the nation. And so one of the things that we know is, and Corey mentioned this, is a key component of that data is Potawatomi Promise because that's part of Iowa Western enrollment. And fifty-six percent of our students choose Iowa Western as a post-secondary option, which has also continually increased over the last several years. For instance, last year, it was fifty percent. So we're up six more percent. So we have to pay attention to that data. That data set is large. So how our students essentially do at Iowa Western really determines on whether or not we're successful as an organization, and that's why we have some visitors to talk a little bit about that. Specifically, when we look at the data, the light blue there is the national data, and then the dark blue is our data. We see that, again, the national trends are going down. This latest number is fifty-five percent nationally. Now, we still have work to do. We see that we are still below, when you consider all enrollments, which again includes four-year and two-years, but you can see that we are up again this past year. So we're excited about that. That's forty-nine percent, by the way, in that last column. So about half of our students are represented there. As I mentioned before, two-year enrollment data is even more promising. You can see in two thousand fourteen that we passed the national data, data set. And in two thousand fifteen, again, above them, a slight downward trend there that's twenty-five percent for us, but then back up in two thousand sixteen to thirty percent. This number here for them is twenty-three percent. So one of the things to mention, too, is this is comparing like data. So these are, these are schools that look like us in terms of demographics and so forth. So it's not like we're comparing to data sets that are unlike us. So I think that's important. But a real celebration in terms of that our students continue to choose Iowa Western as an option, and we continue to get better there. So as I mentioned before, we're improving as a system internally. We're doing lots of things. One of the key initiatives that you know about is the Potawatomi Promise program. And so I asked Jordan to come this evening, Jordan Vall, our graduation coach, and share a little bit about what he is helping us do to improve this data. Jordan?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Great. As Dr. Plore said, I'm Jordan Vall. I'm the Potawatomi Promise graduation coach, where I serve as an intrusive advisor for the juniors and seniors. We currently have between both schools, AL and TJ, one hundred and fifty-four students. So what I do on a daily basis is I do progress monitoring. And what that means is I monitor the kids' grades, their attendance. I make sure they're still having that motivation, that drive to continue with, you know, education, and make sure they're participating as well in classes. Starting their junior year, I sit in on the integrated three classes every other day because, like I said, I'm split between both schools and just show the support that I have for each student. And just the more FaceTime I have with the individuals, I'm seeing a lot of greater success with that. I help them on assignments, and, you know, once the teacher's done, I kind of walk around just to make sure the kids are still focused and they're continuing their work. Also, junior year, we do campus visits. And with these campus visits, we take the students on a tour. And so they see the dorms where they're going to live, and they peek their head in to see, like, you know, the professors and how many students are in each class. We also serve them lunch, and they have a chance to meet with Megan and Bridget if they have any extra questions. So it's kind of like that recruiting process, right? I'm getting the kids like super excited because this is where they're going to be in two years. And then as a follow-up to that, we also have what's called Career Days. And Career Days are turning out to be a fabulous thing. So what Career Days are, is I work with Megan and Bridget on these. And one highlight I'd like to bring up is one of the students in cohort four, the junior class. Here's an individual named Jeff. He is, like many of the juniors, just kind of finding what he wants to go into, kind of career exploring. And, you know, I met with all the kids, and, you know, I let them know that there's going to have these individual Career Days, and Megan and Bridget will kind of expand a little bit more on those. But one key highlight that I really took from this individual was, he was one that, you know, said, you know, "Yeah, Jordan, I really want to get my hands dirty, but I'm not quite sure what I want to do." So we had this Career Day back in October, and he really enjoyed it. So we traveled to Fright Trucking. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. And immediately shifted, right? Right after that was done, he contacted me and said, "Jordan, I would like to job shadow here." So other kids caught wind, and they're like, "Hey, where can we job shadow?" So that culture of college and career readiness, now your career piece is to that, and the kids are really driving on that. So I just kind of wanted to touch base on that story about that individual. And then senior year, I help them make that major, you know, find what exactly they want to do, create a pathway for a very smooth transition to Iowa Western. The students also, senior year, take statistics, where I also sit in there, like I do integrated. And I also co-teach SDV one fourteen, which is the college readiness course. So many amazing points that we teach in this class, but a few I want to touch base on is we help the students learn study skills, which is something that a lot of students, you know, struggle with. And we learn how to write professional emails. So just that email etiquette, going in, knowing how to, you know, have that jargon with the professors and everything. Engage in office hours. So I hold office hours every day as if a professor would, to have them come in just to see where my office is, you know, and say hello, not because, you know, I'm bored at my job, right? But it's building that relationship, right? It's, you never know when you're going to need that professor or instructor. So that's why I have that going as well. And they learn how to take tests. They learn how to take a variety of different note-taking abilities. so they're exposed to so much, and we also learn how to increase reading and memory techniques. So during SDV 114, I also take the seniors back to Iowa Western again as their final walk-through. Hey, this is the cafeteria, here's the library, you know, we take another tour with them, and they see the dorms. So they kind of start to think, okay, this is what I'm going to need, so that whole, you know, piece is coming together, and the kids, you know, that's that last point where you see like the real excitement because they're almost there. And then I also hold individual tutoring sessions on every other Monday between both schools to try to accommodate, and also Tuesday through Friday, I do it at Thomas Jefferson. And you would think that only the specific individual kids from that school would be going to the Monday tutoring sessions. Well, that's not the case. I have kids coming from TJ on the Mondays, at AL, and vice versa. So they're starting to build that culture, they're seeing how important it is to get that extra help, and the more they practice at the high school level, it'll be a piece of cake going into college because it's not going to, I mean, we all remember, right, going and talking to our professors. That was, you know, kind of stressful at times, but the more that they build and the more that preparation I give them, they're going to be really successful. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. I just want to flip back real quick. So the things that, you can see we entitled Creating a Future-Ready Culture. Jordan mentioned, you know, college and career ready, that's something that we've talked a lot about, and it doesn't mean just one thing, right? The Potawatomi Promise is a program, it's an initiative, but there's so many subcomponents under those initiatives that are important to creating a future-ready culture. Culture moves really, really slow. It takes a lot of work. It's a cumulative effect of a lot of little things that add up that come together. So thank you, Jordan, for sharing those things. Dynamite student, dynamite kid. I had Jeff in elementary. It's good to see him growing up and doing, heading to great things at Iowa Western. So one of the other things I mentioned is that we're learning from our partnerships outside of our organization. I think I mentioned earlier the stat that we went from 50% of our students choosing Iowa Western to 56% of our students choosing Iowa Western. Again, that's, that's a huge number. We need to pay attention to it. And so we're always looking for ways to continue to partner with Iowa Western. Jordan mentioned SDV 114, which is our Iowa Western Ready Course, which essentially gets students ready for college. And then most recently, I think I mentioned in the last presentation that we're going to add SDV 130, which is called College and Career Exploration. So students need to explore, what are my options in college? What are my career options? How does college lead to a career? How are my post-secondary options available, and how do they help me in the future? So with that, I introduce Bridget.
Hey, guys. My name is Bridget Watson. I'm the Director of College Success Initiatives at Iowa Western. So my job is to be the main contact for the Potawatomi Promise program at all school districts, so there's four school districts now involved with that. And then I'm just the main point person for it, but most importantly, my job is to offer feedback and suggestions, and then also gather feedback and suggestions to just make sure that our students are college and career readiness. So that's my, that's my job at the school.
My name is Megan Milburn. I'm the coordinator of the Potawatomi Promise at Iowa Western. So some of my job responsibilities include working very closely with Jordan. We communicate pretty much on a daily basis just to make sure that everything's going smoothly and to ensure the success of the students. I also oversee our intrusive advisor at Iowa Western who advises the Potawatomi Promise students, and then I work with our intermediary network to develop and facilitate those Career Days that Jordan was talking about.
So something that I just wanted to remind everyone of that's unique to this program is that we select these students at the end of their sophomore year, so we really do get an additional two years with them, so it's really a four-year program. And that affords us an opportunity to work with them while they're in high school. So some of the resources that we provide include FAFSA completion, which sounds like, yeah, we go to the school and we help them complete FAFSA's, but there's a lot of steps with that, just particularly bringing awareness to it, and then the completion of it, which is a huge, huge struggle, and then also afterwards going through the verification process. So there's a lot of steps to FAFSA completion, and fortunately, we can work with them all the way through high school to get it done before they arrive at Iowa Western. So that's one resource that we offer.
And then like Jordan had mentioned, with another resource we have are the campus and classroom visits. So it's really important to give students that early exposure to our campus so that they learn how to navigate it. But then in addition to that, we also, mostly myself and Bridget also, visit the students in the high schools in their classrooms just to answer, you know, general questions that they have about our campus and our programs of study. And then the career exploration, like we've touched on, our intermediary network develops and facilitates those career exploration days with myself and, but in addition to exploring our programs and exploring community businesses that hire Iowa Western students, they also have an opportunity for internships and job shadowing, which Jordan already mentioned.
Lastly, I just wanted to touch on the opportunity, I don't know if it necessarily fits under resources, but this, this partnership and the relationships that have been built through this partnership are huge. So like both, basically, everyone has said, Potawatomi Promise is just a portion of this, but we are learning so much more about all of the students in these, in Council of School Districts. So just having that network of people, having someone you can reach out to, someone you can provide feedback to, who can take it, digest it, and then make changes, has been a huge resource asset just to use each other's networks, so. Thank you.
So just to put a bow on this, and then we'll take some questions. We have some nice celebrations with our post-secondary enrollment data this past year, particularly in all enrollments, and especially in our two-year enrollment numbers with us beating national trends, and so we're celebrating that. We know we're getting better in many, many ways internally. We acknowledge publicly, we still have a lot of work to do, we know that. And then finally, we're getting better in our partnership, and like Bridget just said, we're learning more and more together as the two organizations partner, not only with our Potawatomi Promise students, but all our students. And I'll bring this full circle, I mean, I'm still thinking about the data that Corey shared that was really hot off the press, and once the other things are not embargoed anymore, we'll share those. But the idea that two years ago, or three years ago, when we started these conversations, that at some point, we would be able to publicly say that almost zero of our students are having to take remedial math or English is just an amazing statement and a huge accomplishment, and a testimony to the work of Jordan, Bridget, Megan, and many, many others in our organization. So with that, if you have questions, any of us could answer your questions.
I'll ask a couple questions, and thank you all for your fine presentation. SDV 130, when is that taught? Or when is that going to be taught?
So that will, what we've done is we've shifted the SDV 114 to the junior year, so that way, senior year, they'll be able to take SDV 130. Again, that's our college and career exploration course. So seniors, as a part of Potawatomi Promise, will take that course. In time, we may open that up to our whole organization, just like SDV 114 is only exclusively Potawatomi Promise students at this time. But as that data improves, we'll have conversations about, you know, other options. But like all the presenters alluded to, one of the keys to changing this data is helping young people see themselves as a college student, and college visits, and college exploration, and career exploration, under the guys, under the work of a teacher with a cohort of students, having those conversations consistently with some intensive intrusive counseling are part of the formula to making this data better.
Are there things we've learned, kind of along that line, that we want to roll out to all kids?
Sure. So on the back of your board presentation, there's some things that we're doing for all students, and that's one important component, I think we've shared here, is the power of universal intervention as well as follow-up intervention, tiered intervention. So what we're trying to do as a system is to think about what is good for all students. So you think about advisement as an example. That's a great structure that all students participate in. It's a structure that we can access all students in ways that we haven't before. And so we're really focused, our whole school improvement plan process right now that Dr. Wirthman shared before is focused on what is good for all students. At the same time, you always have to have intervention, but, so yeah, there's a whole host of things that we're doing for all students.
You had said that, or I noticed, I guess, in the packet, that our percentage of two-year students returning for a second year was, was about 59%. Our four-year students, I mean, it's a pretty phenomenal number, at 90%, are going back for a second, second year. Do we know, I mean, is there thoughts on that, or were we losing some kids? Are they going, going into jobs? What's going on?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's a national trend, you're right. And we're, we're very competitive with the nation as far as that goes. I won't share the exact number, but that was shared publicly with the board, that retention rates, perseverance for two-year colleges is pretty dismal at this point. The fact that we're beating that number is very, very encouraging. It's teaching us some things. Cohort Two will be graduating, or Cohort One will be graduating soon from Iowa Western, and then Cohort Two. And then later, we'll be able to share comparison numbers, but the preliminary, preliminary numbers say that we're beating that trend at Iowa Western, and that's exciting for us as well as Iowa Western because we can share that with, with our community and with others as to how are we able to do that. Graduation rates at two-year colleges, again, are pretty dismal.
Will we be tracking these kids if they go on to four-year college? I mean, I realize we can't offer the same services, but...
Well, so, so some of the, Corey alluded to this, some exciting pieces coming down from the state soon are the ability to track students within the state of Iowa. And so we're looking forward to really dive into that data at a deeper level. The National Clearinghouse data is amazing and it's helpful, but we got a preliminary look at the state website, and it's very user-friendly, and we're hopeful that we can begin to look at subgroups and demographics in different ways than we have before.
I might respond to something you said, Mr. Arthur. The Potawatomi Promise actually is designed not necessarily to push kids from two-years into four-year colleges. In fact, they have purposefully tried to say that's not the population they are seeking. So the first year, the first cohort, we probably had more kids. We talk about the fact that when they get up and introduce themselves, they say, "I'm going to be a veterinarian," or "I'm going to be a psychologist," and I know that the sponsors were sitting there thinking, "Now, wait a minute, that's not quite what we were looking at." So we're carefully walking that line between, we love encouraging kids to go on to four-years, but we also don't want to bite the hand that feeds us, which is really trying to be sure that we have kids that are in other jobs that may be just as high-paying and, in some cases, more necessary. So it's an interesting point you bring up, and we're walking that tightrope right now. As we look at, I had it, selecting Cohort Five.
I assume we'll have some sort of feedback from employers or the colleges on where these kids land. If they continue, you know, their first year, are they successful? I mean, it'd be nice, since this is such a data-intensive group, that we somehow figure out how to make this whole system work better for our whole student population.
And across the river, connected to Moec, with whom we are involved, they are looking at some data tracking that would be exactly what you say, that we not only track kids' readiness for kindergarten, but kids' graduation from high school ready to go into college, college and career-ready, kids' success in college, and kids' success at landing a job that is important in their community. So I think the whole world is waking up to this. I, I love the fact that Dr. Wirthman points out, we kind of woke up to it a few years early before some other people did. We're not stopping our work. We're going to try to keep being leaders.
It's a great point, Dr. Burt. I mean, the student, the profile of the student we're looking for for Potawatomi Promise, we remind ourselves that that's not necessarily even the student that was going to go to college at all. And the fact that those students who have particular challenges are able to beat the data is even more amazing. Yeah, we're tracking it as close as we possibly can, but we're always looking for ways to get better about tracking students, individual students and data sets.
You had mentioned that college statistics at the high school level in our district prevents students from needing remedial math in college. Is that just at Iowa Western, or is that at other institutions also?
Yeah, so as a part of Potawatomi Promise, they take Integrated Three during their junior year, and then the agreement is, is that they will follow through senior year and take stats, curriculum enrollment, CE stats, which is that college-level course. And so then what it does is, like Dr. Wirthman said, it gets them out in front of that as a high school senior. We build in additional supports to make sure that they are successful, and we're showing high success rates in that class. We have very few failures in that. So again, that's a great formula, teaching us something as a system that when you put the supports in place and there are the right supports, and you have amazing people like Jordan and Bridget and Megan, that's a good combination for success.
But every college places students in math and English differently.
Do we know if the ACT scores in math are improved with that track? Because they don't test that late, so they don't take the ACT period.
But the compass is a predictor, that's what Dr. Wirthman, a predictor of the predictor, which is the ACT, which is a predictor, so.
And then they think, once Iowa starts to really figure out their post-secondary enrollment and this mobility or whatever's going on, that we'll have a way to truly track where these kids fall. I mean, I saw that six-year number, you know, below 25%, which is not that different than national, which is kind of a sad number, you know. Now, there's not great job markets right now and things like that, so who knows what's always driving that? You know, it could be economy or other reasons, but...
Yeah, and if you look at the data, I mean, there's some interesting things going on which we're trying to figure out in terms of, it seems like students are postponing. You got to look at that two-year-out data for two-year enrollments, and you'll see that many students are going right into the workforce, working for a year or two, and then enrolling into two-year college. So I think, again, like you said, the economy could be driving some of that. There's, there's a variety of things that could be driving that.
I'll just say one note about that two-year, that persistence rate for two-year institutions that you brought up, Troy. That is a high persistence rate for two-year colleges, and it increased 2% last year at a time at Iowa Western where the retention, that same number, it's calculated probably a little bit differently, dropped two percentage points for the college. So I, I was going to, I pointed it out last year, but I was going to point it out again. It's a, that is something else to celebrate.
Yeah, whenever, thank you, whenever you see nationally, things are flat or going down, and then our trend line is going up, even two percentage points is significant because it tells us that we're doing the right things, we're on the right track, and we need to do more of that, maybe at a more universal level, so.
I have a different question on the subset, are they, our benchmark against that of 90 high schools?
Yes.
Do we feel that's a, is that a legitimate benchmark of our district? I'm just curious.
Yes, that's what I was talking about earlier. The, the data from the National Clearinghouse, the data set is gigantic. So what Dr. Wirthman and I try to do is find what are schools that are apples-to-apple, even red apples-to-red apple comparisons? And so we're able to use the, the reports that they have to identify 90 schools, which is about 22,000 students in that data set. So that's, that's a good number to make fair comparisons around.
Excellent. Thank you all, and thank you to Jordan and Bridget and Megan for all your input. Now move to the annual report on early literacy.
We're trying to get all ends of the spectrum, so we're going to go down and have wonderful Julie Smith come and talk to us about our early literacy program.
Might be a first, early literacy to post-grad, written in one meeting.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
So today, talking a little bit about early literacy. I know in your board packet, you had several, several tables that showed some different things that we're doing I know in your board packet, you had several, several tables that showed some different things that we're doing as related to our FAST data, with our subgroups, with our comparisons to the state and to other UEN districts, and how we kind of triangulated that data. So I realized that in your packet, you had a plethora of data to look at, and I appreciate your taking your time to do that. But there is one piece that I kind of wanted to highlight today, because I think it really is one of our successes that we are having or that we can show with the data, because some of our data was really good, as you saw, and some of our data, you probably went, this is not quite where we'd want to have it, and I would totally agree with that. But what I wanted to share with you tonight really has to go around our cohort data. And so this is data that we have, when we have kids with us from kindergarten to third grade or from first grade to fourth grade, because we've been testing through three years, and how this, how we're looking at them affected over time about proficiency on the FAST assessment. The first set of bars, very colorful bars there, is really just kindergarten. This is our current kindergarten coming in as fall data. We start our winter testing data next week, so we don't have those results yet. But in the fall, we're the orange line, the orangish-red line, kind of right there, that would go up. And what you can kind of see there is, we're on the lower side of how our kids are joining us, are beginning with us right at the first of the year. So about 51% of our students are proficient in our first testing session when they're kindergartners for the first time. And you look at that compared to the state data, which is the light blue towards the right-hand side there, and that's closer to 65% of the kids at the state who are doing it. The other bars represent the UEN districts that have been testing for three years as well, like we have been testing. And so you can see, even with our UEN cohorts, our kindergartners come in lower than some or right at some of the other levels. And that's been consistent over the past couple of years, that type of information. When you look at that next data point, the next set of graphs, those are kids that are currently with us in first grade. And what this graph shows is the increase in the number of students that have reached proficiency in the fall by the beginning of first grade. So for us, that number was about 17%. And as you can see on this graph, really, we are at or above the state by a good amount and other UEN districts. And then the next one is second graders, and this is over the last three years. So between, from kindergarten through second grade, we increased proficiency by 23%. More kids are proficient than they were when they started in kindergarten. And you can see how that compares, again, to the state and to other ones. And then you get to third grade, and that's probably where we have seen our biggest increase compared to the other ones. That's 20%, we had a 20% more increase. And, but you can see across the other ones, like, it hasn't happened in other places. And so for me, that's quite a celebration that says, it's not just what we started doing and made some changes with, but we've seen some changes continually for some of these kids over three years to get that increase from fall to fall to fall. And then in fourth grade, you can also see that comparison where we kind of stand out, where we are still, it's about a 10% more increase that has been looking at that than they started out when they were kindergartners. So we are seeing some nice gains there, and, you know, I'm kind of proud of that day, I think that's a really nice thing to see. So I specifically, although I knew you had a lot of data to look at, I really wanted to go back and have you see this in this way about, you know, our struggles are with UEN, like other UENs, we have struggles that a lot of districts don't have. We have a little bit steeper hill to climb, as you can see from that first graph. But, you know, we're making progress and we're doing well with that, and we still have work to go, a ways to go with that.
Okay, Julie, I'm going to interrupt you while you're going to the next page. This is a text that I got from a deputy director at the Department of Education a week ago, and she said, "I am writing a brief summary of the good working, good work happening in literacy in the state, and I want to make sure it's okay if we highlight something awesome about Council Bluffs." Right now, this is what we're writing. Council Bluff schools, for example, have shown regular increases in the percent of students at or at benchmark for the last five consecutive screening periods, ultimately growing from 46.8% in spring 2015 to 56.3% in fall 2017. This type of steady change over a large period of time is how results are best sustained. So people are noticing the fact that, exactly what Julie is pointing out to us.
Yeah, so we're pretty happy about that. We know we still have a ways to go, but we're happy about this. So one of the things that we talked about last year, based on our data, is that we noticed that we had some things missing out of our curriculum and specifically what we were asking teachers to teach with and what we were asking them to teach. We did not have a good balance between foundation skills and comprehension skills. And so one of the things we looked at were materials that could help us do that more efficiently. The other thing we were looking at at that time was really a response from teachers that said, "We spend so much of our time finding materials, finding materials, finding materials, and we wanted to give them some things that they could, instead of looking and using their time to find materials, they could use their time to look at better, how do we instruct kids?" And so we wanted that shift to happen as well. So as you know, we purchased the materials, the Reading Wonders materials, and wanted just to talk a little bit about an update about that, because that has been a big change for us. A couple of the things that have changed that we've seen some, really almost an immediate impact on, are around foundation skills. The foundation skills are things like vocabulary, phonics, grammar, language skills. Those very basic things that kids need to know and be able to do in order to apply them in reading and to be able to comprehend, to read and comprehend text. And the thing, one of the things we've really found going in with this is that now, those type of skills are so aligned with what kids are reading. It makes it really nice, we've been going around doing walkthroughs, we do this all the time in buildings, but Corey was with me doing a walkthrough over at Carter Lake, and it was just so cute, we were in a kindergarten classroom. And the teacher was reading a story, you know, a lesson from, with the materials from Wonders. And she's reading a story and she's going along and she's talking about how the animals had to go get the utensils from someplace. And there was just like this group gasp, we're like, "Oh, utensils, that's our vocabulary word." You know, and it was, first off, I was pretty impressed that kindergartners are like, "Utensils, this is great." They might not have learned that word for a good many years beyond that. But you can see the connectedness of some of those very basic skills that are really going to help our kids later become better readers. They're not reading utensils yet, but because they know and understand that word, the chance that they'll be able to read that when it's a word-appropriate thing is very high now, because we know how much vocabulary affects reading and reading comprehension and the ability to read. So we are seeing those things really start to make a difference with that. We are also seeing things like in first grade, in phonics, when we're really studying the long O sound and with the combinations for long O, they have immediate times to read a lot of those words than in books, because there's a direct connection and there's a direct alignment within those materials. So those things we're really seeing as a really fast, easy benefit for us by the materials. Things that are a little bit more challenging for us are around the comprehension. One of the, one of the really good things that we're seeing is that these materials have lots and lots of grade level and really complex text at grade level for kids to be exposed to and to read on a daily basis all the time. That was missing somewhat from our program before, that frequency and the amount of reading at grade level that it happened. But with all these materials that we have around comprehension and things to do for, we have so much. What we're seeing is, it's hard to choose, what do we, what do we pull from here? And so it's a new problem for us that teachers and buildings are working through to do that with. And so it's kind of that double-edged sword, it's a lot, but now you have to make some really good instructional decisions about what your kids need from that and what you're going to do. And that's now where the focus of our teachers and buildings and administration, everything, are going toward during the reading time. A bonus that we've had from the Wonders materials, that we didn't necessarily get them for this purpose, but that we found that we also have now, are some diagnostic assessments. We knew that that was something missing from our assessment spread of what we've had. We had a lot of different kinds of assessments, but not good diagnostic ones. And we have found that these are good, and teachers, they're easy to use, and teachers are now able to more group kids for intervention needs or things that they need based on the diagnostic assessments. Generally, those are done after the FAST assessments, so we can kind of see kids who aren't reading at grade level, what's holding them back, and then we're able to better address that in a more efficient way. So that was kind of a bonus for us, with something we didn't expect, but that we got from these materials as well. So implementation is not without tremendous effort by our teachers. Teachers and coaches and principals have been working very hard to figure out how to best use these materials with, you know, and how to instruct from these materials, because it is different. It is a little bit different from what they had before. So they have been putting a lot of effort in with doing this. Time has been provided at Summer Academy, at the building level and professional development, at CBU courses, to help support that growth in that way. Honestly, it has slowed down a little bit of our school improvement planning process at the elementary, because we didn't plan for this. We probably should have, but we didn't plan that it was going to take as much time as it did. So we're a little bit slowed down, not tremendously, but we're a little bit slowed down, because we wanted to take, because teachers needed this time and they deserved this time, to be able to learn these materials. In October, we did a survey with our teachers about how comfortable and confident they felt with the materials that we had purchased. And what we found is, in the foundation skill areas, they were very comfortable and very confident. Those were the areas that they could get right in and do pretty easily. And they weren't as confident yet at that time with some of the materials around more of the comprehension skills and strategies that they need to teach with that. So again, we've developed CBU courses on that, that are going, that have happened and will be happening as it come up. And we're having a follow-up survey in February to see how they're feeling about the materials at that time and see what other supports that we might need to provide them in order to have success with this, so... Sounds kind of short and sweet, but please, any questions that you might have for us?
Go for it. Okay, I have one question, I guess on the, that kind of general starting point of our second, third-grade kids proficiency-wise compared to our kindergartners and first graders? And then kind of how some of these have gone. Is it, like, are those kids beyond sitting down and reading books at home? Or what is that breakdown, where those kids have decided now they don't like to read anymore? Because I think that those younger kids are probably getting mom and dad reading to them very now and then and learning that, but it seems to be a struggle, it has been a struggle for years.
I think one of the things that you see in the difference between the kindergarten first, even our second grade is a little higher, but you'll see real stagnant third, fourth, and fifth grade right now. Part of that is a result of where we have shifted and when we shifted some of our focus on foundation skills. So two years ago, when we first got our FAST results, and I guess what I would tell you, it's a little more direct in kindergarten and first grade, when you're looking at foundation, and in second grade, because so much of what they're doing is learning how to read with those types of skills, there's a real direct connection about foundation and that ability to read those grade-level texts with doing that. It's not quite as clear-cut when you start getting into older grades, about what makes, when you're putting it all together and being able to read text at a certain rate, there's a lot of things that go into that. And so it's not quite as direct as it is in KN1. We were able to switch, two years ago, more instruction in that way. It might not have been the best sequence instruction or going with that, I don't think is as good as it is right now, but we were able to switch that. So we saw a nice immediate increase in that, that kind of lasted through first grade. And not as high in second grade as we have liked to see, but there was still an increase in second grade when you, when you start to look at that from two years ago. We haven't had that same advantage in three, four, and five, and it was one of the reasons we wanted to change our materials in doing with that. Because now, additionally, in third, fourth, and fifth grade, there are a lot more foundation skills we can work on. We just really didn't have the scope or really knowing what that was prior to this. So we're hoping to see some of that jump up now, as we've had more, a more balanced instructional approach in third, fourth, and fifth grade as well. So that is part of the reason with that. So I don't know so much about not liking to read, it's that we just didn't have those skills to kind of...
Like exposure to it, whatever's going on. And then on your little cohorts group? Is there any of those that we feel we could make a big impact on, that would make a strong impact on the rest of the students? I'm just curious, socioeconomic status or English learners or? It's kind of interesting, you know, how they've improved, and there was, you know, and we, I don't know, just maybe I'm looking into the numbers too much or...
Right, well, I think one of the things that is going to help us with, because we did choose to go with the Wonders materials as a support for us, is that they have a very highly-aligned EL program for, that is, that is just so tightly aligned with what kids get in the classroom and what they'll get with, from their English language teachers, that we should be able to see some better growth. Anytime you can align those things really tightly, the chances of kids growing faster are going to happen. And so we're hoping to see that, too. We were also able to align some things that the EL teacher is doing with our curriculum maps at the regular grade teacher. So if I'm a regular second-grade classroom teacher, I have right in front of me the types of words they're learning when they're with their ESL teacher that are also in the books that we are working with. And so there's such a tight alignment that, that opportunity, I think, is there to see some more growth. I don't know that we'll see it this year, because it's so new, but that opportunity is definitely there when you have that great alignment between those two programs.
It is nice to see that, just continual growth in the others.
Absolutely.
Over, you know, quarter following fall.
Agreed.
No other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
You may.
Thank you, Julie. It's probably important that we left that up there. Oh. It said something to the effect of, "Implementation doesn't happen without the very hard work of our teachers." And that leads me into introducing our licensed staff member of the month, who is here, just following parent-teacher conferences. So Elizabeth, come on up here. Isn't it great, she got to come hear what we do when there are parent-teacher conferences? We talk about how wonderful you are and how hard you're working and how great it is to have your principals there, so, thank you. Let me tell you about Elizabeth. This is Elizabeth Becker, who's fourth-grade teacher at Longfellow Elementary School and is our licensed staff member of the month. She has been working in the Council Bluff School since 2009, and here's what her nominators from our schools said about her. Elizabeth is an exemplary educator. She strives to truly know the students and families she serves. Her drive to understand and teach with best practices and student need in mind is essential in our district. She strives to help students achieve in all areas of academics, as well as their social-emotional well-being. She has a goal to make sure all of her students are working toward becoming outstanding citizens, hard workers, and are kind and caring. You can see it in the positive attitudes the children have of themselves after working with her. She truly lives the motto of all our kids. Elizabeth is an excellent role model for our teachers as well. Her assistance in implementing innovative technology is wonderful. She's quick to help any fellow coworkers with a problem or help them grow by videotaping herself using effective teaching practices. She helps organize staff potlucks and works with students in 21st Century Club, and she's an asset to Longfellow and the school district. She most definitely embodies the school mission, compassion, the school's mission, compassion, inspire, learn together. She is supported here, after a long day at the office, by Longfellow principal Gary Milburn. So Elizabeth, on behalf of the Board of Education, the Community Education Foundation, and all of our educators, we want to give you this trophy that says you are our licensed staff member of the month. And on behalf of the Community Education Foundation and 360 Steakhouse, a, an opportunity to have some dinner out.
Oh, wow, well, thank you.
You're welcome, there you go. It's such a long day at the office, I'm glad we could tell you how much we appreciate it.
Congratulations.
That was said live, by the way.
Now Dean is going to wow us with the annual transportation report.
Darren Tooten.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. Thank you, in your board packets, I put together an agenda summary sheet, which I'm going to refer to along with this presentation. So the district transports roughly 2,200 students per day back and forth. About a quarter of those are special education students, and we also have to transport some non-public students as well. We have 54 buses leased this year, which is down from 69 in the prior year. That is some of the savings that we have garnered from the change in the bell times. I have the new bell times that are up there and the number of routes that are run. We're on a three-tier bus system, yeah, three-tier system, which means that a bus will go to three, has three different stops, rather than two-tier, which is two different stops. So we can use the buses... So we can use the buses more efficiently. The transportation costs that we have up here, you can see, except for the last year, we've had increases every year. We had a slight decrease last year because of some changes that we, that we embarked on. But what's going to happen in the next year is that our cost going into the 16, 17-year, all things being equal, should be about $150,000 less than that $3.6 million up there because of the change in the bell times and other changes that we made. This is just kind of a general information here. We have a committee that meets monthly to go over issues regarding busing at the buildings and with the, with the first student as well. All buses have cameras and two-way radios. Buses that transports special ed students have monitors to ensure that appropriate behavior is handled on the bus. I continue, that's a very tough job some days. More special education students with IEPs requesting transportation. This is putting some strains on us, where we may have to add buses at some point in the future because of our special education needs. I believe we have roughly, Corey can maybe verify this, about 1,700 special education students roughly, right now. We have shuttles that run between the high schools, so there's more class offerings available to students currently. And we're in the first year of a three-year contract with the first student. One of the changes that we made for 16, 17 is, in the prior years, what we've doing is we can take our bus leases and pay for those out of the PEPAL fund. And you may recall, one of the strategies that we set to help with the general fund spending authority is to try to move stuff over there. Well, when we rewrote the contract, essentially, we could put anything we wanted down for what the lease cost is, because they just gave us a number. So I moved an additional $400,000 as a lease, and we're paying that out of the PEPAL fund now, so that we can preserve some spending authority in the general fund. So we have about an $835,000 lease as compared to $410,000 from the prior year, but it's all the same amount of money, it's just how we parse it into different buckets. What I did also in your packet, I gave you the routes per school building for the morning and the afternoon. You can see, most of them are exactly the same. There's a couple that are different. Some people say, ask me, well, you know, why is that different? Well, at the end of the day, first students not only transporting our students, but they're transporting St. Albert, they're transporting kids to Heartland and Children's Square. So the routes may change at the end of the day because of what's going on there as well. One of the things I wanted to talk to the board about tonight, which I alluded to in the, the summary sheet, is our issues with space available. We have a lot of kids who write space available. There are parameters that the board has set that says if, basically for your, for elementary, we do not provide space available at all. And that's because that the schools are probably within a mile of, in most kids' homes unless they enroll to another school, which in that case, they're not eligible for transportation. The parents have to get the kids over there. For the middle schools, the space available range is 1.25 to 2 miles. If it's over 2 miles, they automatically qualify. If it's under 1.25, they don't. High schools is 2 to 3 miles is the space available range. We get a number of calls, especially in the winter, from parents who say, "I want my kid to ride," and when we look it up, "I'm sorry, you don't qualify for space available." And you can understand that we have some agitated folks on the phone, which I, I get, you know, I understand that. And we have to tell them, "No, you do not qualify for space available." They're threatening to go to the board. I tell them that's the board policy, so, you know, they're more than welcome to come and discuss it with the board. But we do get a number of these calls, like I said, especially in the wintertime. The space available is really kind of a difficult animal, because we don't have any control over it. Literally, if a kid got to a bus stop and he lived, or she lived, within, short of what the space available was, and they actually got on the bus, we don't know. We have no idea. Which begs the question, why don't you know? Well, the problem is, is that in the past, we've, we've asked kids, we've had bus passes, okay? Good idea. The problem is, with a bus pass, Johnny or Sally are going to lose the bus pass. Then what they do is they have to go into the building, and they have to wait for the secretary to write them out a bus pass while the bus is sitting out there and not going on its route, which means kids are going to be late going home. Okay? We have looked at doing things like biometrics, where Johnny puts his fingerprint coming in. We could do that. Some parents don't like, they believe it's an intrusion of their privacy for that. The bigger case is, is that we have to wait until every kid scans on and off the bus. Okay? So there's not, we have not really come up with a good way, and our committee has wrestled with this. We want to do something in this manner. We have not come up with any good ideas to allow us to do that without slowing up the buses considerably on their routes, which is the biggest complaint that we have. The student is not home, mom and dad is worried, understandably so. They call and they raise Cain about, "Well, the bus company is failing." Well, it's not that, it's just getting the kids on and off the buses just takes a little extra time some, sometimes. So I wanted to tell you that it is a struggle that we have with space available. I wrote in the narrative, we've only collected about $1,400 in fees last year for people who pay for space available. A lot of people are free and reduced. Some of them just don't pay, who do, who are supposed to. So it's, it's a difficult issue that we're dealing with regarding space available. We, somebody, somebody said to me recently, "We decided to try to talk the board into getting rid of it." And I said, "Here's the problem." He said, "Those kids need to come to school. And if it means that we have a bus that can run past an area to get them on the bus to get them to school, that's better for the kids." Okay? It may be a hassle for us some, some days, but they're, but it's better for us, but it's better for the kids. So, you know, what we're doing is, we're trying to do everything, everything available to make this work. I mean, if we got rid of space, space available, we could probably cut out five or six buses. That saves, that saves money. As the bean counter, I'll tell you, I like to save money, but at the same time, our mission is to help kids, so. That's my transportation.
He's gotten better, right?
I've gone over to the dark side.
Yes, we said he's coming over to the dark side. I'd like to say about transportation, which is a, a struggle for everybody, but we have, for the board's information, we have been talking in the last two or three weeks about what kind of budget changes we might recommend for next year to try to help us deal with an uncertain legislature and consistently increasing challenges in our finances. And I'm not going there right now, but I am going to say, I think some of the hard work that was good work that we did in the last year, which very significantly included the busing, which was a hardship on a lot of people to try to figure out how those times are going to affect families and teachers and going home times, et cetera. But in the long run, it's paying off, and we're going to keep doing those kind of things. And Dean's right, we could make some easy answers. There's some other districts that have made easier answers, and an easy answer, while it may save money, doesn't necessarily get our kids to school, help them read by third grade or graduate from high school. So I think our district is really doing a good job of trying to balance a lot of conflicting needs, keeping in our heart what, what Dean pointed out, that our main job is to try to help kids succeed.
I do struggle with the fact that if I'm the parent who's paid the $1,400 to have my kid go, and my neighbor's kid maybe jumps on the bus double the number of times, whatever they never pay, and have the ability to that way.
And we've also had cases where someone who doesn't qualify for space available says, "Well, there's a sex offender who lives down the street, and my kids have to walk past his house every day. I'm sorry, that's not a hazard zone." Because what if that neighbor moves tomorrow? Okay? Now your kid's not, is not going to ride. There is, there are problems that if I let that person ride, then the neighbor calls me and says, "Hey, I was talking to Mrs. so-and-so, and she said you're, you're transporting them. How come my kid can't go?" So you have to draw the line, and unfortunately, we have this, you know, fortunately and unfortunately, we have a board policy that says, "These are the rules." And I told one parent last week, and I said, "I'm sorry, I cannot circumvent the board policy. The board has said, 'This is the rule. I have to follow the rule.'"
So what are you asking of us?
As I guess, I don't know.
Even underlined it.
Nothing, this was just a report, so. I'm not asking anything of you. I'll, I'm fetching.
If I could make an observation?
Yes.
We had posted that we would be having this transportation report tonight, and at, near the beginning of the meeting, we had an opportunity for members of the community to address the board regarding subjects on the agenda or other matters of concern. And we have publicized that this meeting, we would have the transportation report, and none of the parents, who are displeased with the board policy, have seen fit to come for our public opinion period to address the board regarding our transportation policy and the ranges for the space available versus eligible to ride versus ineligible to ride. And so that is simply an observation that I am making.
It's a very good observation. I don't think most people really pay that much attention to what we're doing tonight, but it'd be nice if they did.
But an answer to, to Bill's question, I'll, I just wanted to let the board know that these are some of the day-to-day issues that we're running into, so you know, in case at some point in time, you may want to say, if you want to revisit something, if you want to have us go back and look into something regarding transportation, we certainly could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are on to our resolution portion, and the first resolution is approval of the 2018-2019 school calendar. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the 2018 to 2019 school calendar as presented.
Second?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion?
I just have a plea. Sometime in the future, I'd sure like to see a calendar presented to us that has no more than a six-week summer break. I'm still convinced that would help with student achievement. I'm getting tired of our teachers in poverty being blamed for a lack of student achievement, and maybe the way we do business has something to do with it also. Thank you.
Could I respond?
Sure.
Dr. Vorthman and I and his department are looking very carefully at extending a summer school program that would really come very close to buffering some of those dates. Now, we can't give everybody summer school, but we have figured out that maybe we need to push, in fact, this year, we're going to push to a seven-week summer school period and give everybody Fridays off and take the week of July 4th off, all of which to make it be attractive. But we are getting closer for those students in some serious need to, to doing exactly what you want, so.
That's great.
Don't tell anybody.
Excellent. Dean, want to go ahead and call the roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Abstain.
Abstain. Mr. Gesire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion is carried. Now we have approval of plan specifications, form of contract for bid 17-003 Kern Middle School Fire Alarm Clock and Intercom Project. Is there a motion?
Move approval of plans, specifications, and form of contract for bid number 17-003 Kern Middle School Fire Alarm Clock and Intercom Project.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent, thank you. Susan, is there any discussion on this project? All right, Dean?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Gesire?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Now we have approval of agreement with Berenger Chacho Dental Mayberry, Inc., BCDM, for work on the Canesville Tinley Building. Is there a motion?
Move approval of agreement with Berenger Chacho Dental Mayberry, Inc., BCDM, for work on the Canesville Tinley Building.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion on this project?
I had a quick question. This is for the removal of the boiler and the work in things. This is all the demolishing, the inside.
Yeah, just the clean out.
Correct. I'm assuming it's, it's much more extensive, because the boiler system runs through the entire everything.
There are also, you are going to hopefully approve also tonight?
Yeah, the asbestos.
The asbestos abatement program.
Right.
So that, what we're trying to do is to clean out the, things in the building, asbestos in an old boiler system that would absolutely be in the way of any future projects or in the way of selling the building if we decided to.
Okay, all right. Because I was reading in that, in the plans, that it hasn't been decided what we're going to do with it yet. Okay. But it's got to be done one way or the other.
Excellent. Any more discussion? Okay, Dean?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Gesire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now we have approval of revised job description for Assistant Program Director for Summer Learning. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the revised job description for the Assistant Program Director for Summer Learning as presented.
Thanks, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion on this? No? All right.
I'm sorry, did Scott second that?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gesire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now we have approval of the Canesville Abatement Project, bid 17-004.
I'll move to approve the costs for the Canesville Abatement Project 17-004 with payment to New Horizons LLC in the amount of $46,069.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Jill, is there any discussion?
I noticed there's a somewhat significant difference between the different bids that came in. Is that any cause for concern for us?
Stacy's here, but Stacy told me that she thought the bids would come in closer to where they, what we have approved. So the other bid that was much higher was somewhat of a surprise.
Okay. No other discussion? Dean?
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gesire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?